All right, it is 7:02. I will call it together this special meeting of the Waterbury Select Board on Monday, the 30th of September, 2024. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I have motion?
I'm going to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All right, uh, booed and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing.
Mrs. Sonright, I'm going to be also to town fair and gotten email about if I'm the voting delegate. I don't know if we've satisfied anyone that we should add that if we want to have a discussion.
I'll be there too, so.
Yeah, I can be your. I just.
But it's tomorrow for voting.
Okay, uh, what's that, um, to the top or the bottom?
Bottom side. It's not interesting.
Okay. Let's see. Uh, all right, any other amendments to the agenda? Hearing none.
I second the amendment.
Okay, yes, thank you. Uh, all right, we're voting on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, now we're voting on the amended agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, the agenda is approved as amended. Next is the consent agenda. Do I have motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, so the agenda is approved as written. Next is the public session. Anyone wishing to address anything not on the warned agenda, I ask you to please come forward, state your name, and please keep your card secret, as possible. Actually, I have something. This, uh, past, uh, middle of September, uh, 13th of September, uh, the state police, had their annual awards ceremony, and a few people of interest were awarded. TJ Howard, uh, was lieutenant residing over, uh, the contract of the town, was, uh, noted for rescuing a two-year-old boy, uh, in a drowning incident a year ago. And, uh, Mae Murdock, uh, was one of the officers that serves Waterbury, uh, would help in the resuscitation of a woman, uh, on a golf course nearby, 68-year-old woman, uh, was resuscitated on July 3rd. And then, uh, this past April, uh, April 19th, Leanne Viens rescued a canoeist in Holland Pond. So I'd like to, uh, thank all of those, uh, people for their, uh, for their work and their heroism and, uh, for, uh, serving the town.
Thanks, Eric. I like that part of it.
You got it. Nicely done.
Thank you.
Anything else on the public? Okay.
Who seconded the agenda? Sorry, I didn't.
Uh, Mike.
All right, anyone online? No. All right, let's move on. The senior center, uh, request to allocate ARPA funds. Previously, we had allocated, uh, $26,000 to support renovations in their kitchen. Justin came forward, uh, and suggested, uh, why that can't go forward, and suggested that, uh, he might have an alternative. Uh, Justin, you want to come forward?
Thank you. So, um, if everyone's happy with, uh, the story, as it were, of, of why the, the existing project cannot go forward.
Yeah, we don't need to hear that.
That's fine. So, so the, the, the ask right now, uh, is that the next thing that we, uh, equipment-wise, that we anticipate completely giving out on us that has recently already had a couple of repair costs of size, uh, would be, uh, the range, the, uh, the main, the main, uh, the main range stove, it's a 60-inch style stove. Uh, so the ask would be of some of that remainder, um, to use $10,005, um, to be able to replace that. Um, that's a Vulcan brand from, um, a Vermont dealer, Singer Kittredge. Um, and the hope would be that that would get that piece of equipment through to another 25, 30 years old, which is what we believe our existing stove is.
All right. Uh, yes, Mike?
Since the original ask was 26,000, are there any other, because I know the senior center always has probably needs.
There's, there are always needs. Um, uh, there, there will be another next, uh, next most important, that would be the convection oven, uh, sometime. I think that's still got a few years in it right now. Uh, just not really wanting to be overly greedy if we not trying to say, oh, we're gonna find something to make every penny to try and go like that. Just right now, the, the honest need is for that, for that stove replacement.
So just, just by way of background, the ARPA funds have to be allocated by the end of this year, which from our perspective, they are for this project. So the 26,000 was allocated, had to be spent by the end of next year. So they spent some money before this, if they spent this extra $10,005, they'll have 50, about $5,400 left to spend in 2025.
I'm sure it's very, very possible in '25 that that could, uh, be put to very good use towards something if that was the board's decision on that.
We've already allocated the money to the senior center.
Yeah, kind of from that perspective, as long as you spend that money in 2025, as long as you write a check to the senior center in 2025, you've got the allocation of ARPA funds. They don't have to spend it as a senior center that year.
We haven't allocated, we haven't written them a check for anything.
Oh, yes, you have already, um, I forget what exactly that is.
$10,551.
I forget what exactly that was for as part of the.
That was, uh, uh, original plans, uh, some deposits and original materials that are not wasted. They just go towards, unfortunately, what we can't start until '26.
That's for the hood, right?
That's for the hood, yeah.
All right. Any further questions? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve $10,050, is it?
$10,005.
Okay, for, um, of the remaining 26,000 ARPA funds for, uh, to be allocated in 2024.
Second.
We already allocated the funds.
It'd be expenditure to be expended in 2024.
All right, so the motion is to allow Justin, uh, to send a check for, uh, $10,005 to the senior center for the purchase of the stove. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, please don't forget us, uh, next year, so you can get.
We will, don't worry, I'll, I'll, I'll note to the exact dollar what's what. Would you prefer the invoice on that first, or?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make sure that happens. Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks, Eric. Okay, uh, next we have the crew and natural disaster preparedness committee interface. Uh, we did receive a draft copy of the manual that was produced by the, uh, Natural Disaster Preparedness Committee. Unfortunately, uh, Crew does not have a chance to review it, as I understand it, as of yet.
We got it at 6:35.
So no, we haven't had a chance. Yeah. Um, okay, but we can, uh, perhaps discuss, uh, the key points that are in that and, uh, go over, uh, some of the, uh, things that we should be aware of going forward. This is just an initial discussion. I don't think we're gonna be, uh, making any firm, uh, decisions tonight on this, but good run. Um, so, uh, is, does, is there someone from the Natural Disaster Preparedness Committee here? No. All right. Um, however, I've reviewed up till now, I have reviewed the two versions of this that have existed once, when it was first pitched, and then after suggested edits were made by the committee, not by crew, obviously, so we're sort of stunted in that regard, um, as I don't know what edits crew would want to see. Um, but I interpreted this as a pretty cut-and-dry, straightforward manual. Matt Dugan did a very good job of breaking down key elements of what volunteers would be doing and safety precautions and, uh, the whole nine yards. So it has my vote of approval, but I would want to see Crew's suggestions. Okay. Um, and the, what, what I got out of the manual reviewing it today was that it has a job description for disaster response coordinator. Um, and then also, uh, a job description or list of responsibilities for team leaders, uh, or what is also termed the volunteer corps. Uh, and then it goes into, uh, the pre-disaster communications, uh, what should go on the website on an ongoing basis, uh, and, uh, communications that should go out at least once every half-year to, uh, the volunteers and to the general public about what it means to be prepared. Um, and, uh, then when there is a looming, uh, event on the horizon, identifying who are the people that would be vulnerable to a flooding event in particular, and, uh, then how to prepare for that event. Um, and then regular communications up to and through the event period, uh, with the general public, particularly those that are gonna be most affected, and the volunteers who are recruited in advance, are recruited in advance. And then, uh, a series of steps, uh, to be taken immediately after, uh, the flooding event or the disaster event, including, uh, the assessment forms. And one of the questions is whether they should use the same assessment form as Crew has prepared. So maybe we can ask Crew about that, along with other things that they've learned. There's a member of the. Oh, yeah, right there. All right. Kelly, just let her know that she's got three seconds to prepare.
I'm on down.
Yeah, welcome.
Really?
Yeah. Star of the hour.
Yeah. We're just, um, introducing the, uh, manual that, uh, the Natural Disaster Preparedness
Committee has drafted, and, uh, going through some of the key points, such as the job description for the disaster response coordinator, the team leaders, and the volunteer corps, and then, uh, different communications that need to go out, uh, on a regular, uh, basis pre, before any sort of looming disaster is, is identified, and then what changes when a looming event is identified, uh, and then communications as that, uh, disaster approaches, communications with volunteers and with the vulnerable population, uh, and then, uh, communications and activities directly after the, uh, the flood. So, um, is there anything that you, you want, first of all, we should get your name and, uh, group, and, uh, get your, your take on overall the, the development of the, of the guide, and then anything you want to sort of highlight.
Okay, well, I'm Betty Hubicki, and I'm probably the person who should at least be here to talk about this. It, uh, reminds me when I did my post-doc in, uh, psychiatry, and people who were there for the accreditation asked me, they encountered me, and the doctor in charge said, no, no, you don't want to talk to her. But anyway, so I'm here. Um, so, so mostly, you know, it was written mostly by, uh, Matt Dugan.
Yeah.
And each of the members of the committee, you know, took a look at it, you know, wrote in some changes. Um, I did write up, myself, who wrote up a part about what is available from the Red Cross, given different circumstances. And I also wrote up a brief part about social-emotional functioning. So for example, you know, when crew or the volunteers are out mucking, uh, sometimes they run across people who are really distraught, and it happens a lot, and sometimes people are more distraught, and you're concerned about them. So I basically just outlined, you know, some steps, like to make sure, or just to check in with them and see if they're safe, but if they aren't feeling safe, then, you know, then I tell, talk about what to do. Um, I will have some brochures, actually, I think some of the Red Cross brochures are the most helpful, because they talk about, like, emotional impacts of disasters, what to expect. Um, sometimes people think they're going crazy, like, if they're not sleeping, um, you know, it's, it is normal, it really is normal for something like a disaster. Uh, but I also have one about children, too, because parents get concerned about their children, and children start acting differently, so, you know, so there'll be another brochure. And so those would be things that, that Crew, for example, could take out with them when they go to a home. And, um, you know, we'll also, you know, have the available, uh, you know, here, there'd be, you know, a lot of papers of those here. Um, so that, I, you know, I think, you know, a lot of the manual does have places where they talk about what the coordinator would do, too, because that's a response coordinator. Um, but, uh, yeah, so I don't know if I can be in.
Well, you know, we do have a couple of representatives of Crew here, um, and, uh, so I guess what, uh, might be, uh, most, uh, interesting from that standpoint might be, at what point do you see the Natural Disaster Preparedness Committee stepping aside and Crew stepping in?
Uh-huh, okay. So, I mean, I think that would be the response bit, mostly, you know, when, um, you know, people are, are safe, you know, they're, they're not in a dangerous situation, but, um, but when it's time, like, if homes need to be, you know, mucked out, for example, um, for that, you know, Crew, you know, has a lot of experience, and they do that really well, that they're set up to do that. Um, you know, some of our members do, you know, help out with that, like Matt did, you know, in the worst recent flood. Uh, you know, he joined Crew, you know, and came out of home. Um, so part of it, you know, is preparedness, you know, part of our name. Um, but, you know, warning people that, you know, you don't want to have a lot of things, you know, cluttering up the lowest rooms in your home, you know? And so, you know, the education about, you know, how to be prepared. Um, I think in our last meeting, we also talked about some things we'd recommend homeowners who have, who face this a lot, you know, would, would want to purchase, like a dehumidifier, um, what's the other one?
Subpo.
Yeah, like a subpo, yeah. Um, so, yeah.
One of the things was moving, uh, your utilities out of.
Right, yeah.
Recommendation that I noticed in the, in the guide. Yeah, other questions? Yeah, Kane.
Um, I think you want, I bet you took some raw strokes. I want to hold you up. Um, and thank you for speaking by surprise.
I appreciate being here.
So after attending the joint meeting between Crew and the Preparedness Committee, there is conversation. Obviously, Crew is a long-term recovery, uh, organization, whereas the, uh, manual sort of sets out, you know, with a disaster response coordinator and, and official positions with official job descriptions, as, as the direct response mucking out, um, making sure that, essentially, the infrastructure of a, of a home is sound, um, before Crew begins their long-term recovery, uh, would be the objective of this manual and by proxy, the objective of the town.
So mucking out would still be the, be under.
The volunteer, the volunteer corps would be under, as the manual lays out, volunteer corps would be under the direction of a disaster response coordinator, who would, as was discussed, um, in the joint meeting, be an employee of the town.
And so you're saying that the, the volunteer corps under town direction?
Under town direction.
Would also take on the responsibility of mucking out the affected?
Right, as that is, as that is short-term recovery.
Yeah.
And then Crew can take over after the short-term recovery has been concluded.
All right, so that would be in a few days.
I hope, I would hope.
I just want to name that there's several crew reps here, and I really appreciate it. We did specifically get told that this manual was gonna go to Crew before it came to us, and that hasn't happened, so I just want to be, like, really aware of setting expectations on other groups that we have to talk to. I think Kane framed out really well that, first of all, thank you to the Natural Disaster Preparedness Committee, this is pulling so much stuff together. I think, like, the volunteer waiver form, I think I, like, found in my Google Drive from 2023 and pressed copy for 2024, and having a set place where a lot of these things live, I think is really valuable. So I really appreciate that that's, this manual is pulling all of those things together to do that. I think Kane hit the nail on the head that the, the really important thing here is that this is building a framework, saying that this is something the town is taking on, and that it likely will be reliant on hiring the committee, and to be clear, like, I think that may very well be the right path, but I think it's important for us to know that, like, we have to have those discussions, we have to have buy-in from everyone who's named in this, um, in terms of if that's a thing we're doing and devoting resources to it this way. Like, we've thrown it all together with what we've done twice, but I think we just want to be intentional about deciding and communicating if and what we're creating expectations for doing moving forward.
Mike?
I didn't have a real good chance, because I, we just got it today, and I just briefly looked at it this, this afternoon. The one thing in my brief look at is, I would have liked to, I'm looking at way before any disaster happened, a more of a line of communication between the committee, the emergency management director, town staff. I think that's kind of really is important to lay out, to have some protocols and possibly that you're steering maybe trainings along with some of, some of these folks to get ready for this, because I see the Natural Preparedness Committee more as a, let's get ourselves ready versus, like, Crew is, when the thing happens, that's where they sort of come in and, and, and take, take the reins. I'm not saying you just on day, oh, we're, we're done and stuff like that.
No.
But I think there's, there's a, a short changeover where you, you guys could help, but then, but I think you, to me, your more important part is the communication pre any event happening, whether it be a flood, you know, I'm kind of in this, I have, one of my roommates, lives in Asheville, North Carolina, so he's knee-deep in this, no pun intended, uh, this, this whole process, and, you know, all of us here have been, you know, involved in, but to me, I think it's really important that this committee helps in formulating things prior to events, so we're better apt to handle it once the event occurs.
Okay. I'll discuss.
In fairness, uh, to Betty and Matt and the others on the committee, I think that that is laid out fairly clearly, if you, if you read it closely. Uh, there is, uh, quite a bit of.
Right.
Detail as to what might be said even a year before anything might happen.
Um, this starts to get at it a little bit, but, um, from my perspective, it must unpacks what the town does and what the town pays for. It'd be useful to clearly define when short-term recovery ends and the long-term recovery begins, so. Mucking out seems to me that it's something that, especially if you've got a lot of silt in your basement, that a lot of volunteers can help, the backer truck can help, but I almost wonder if the line should be beyond that, if there's, you know, need for dehumidifiers and water remediation, that's more of a long-term proposition, is that more of a Crew, that the Crew line begins? Um, and then the manual.
We can tell you where we define that.
Well, it's not really defined by anyone, and I think it should be.
Yeah, I guess I'm just saying, as a group that's done this three times now, if anybody is interested in knowing where we draw those lines, we're happy to provide that information.
Yeah.
But we have not.
Yeah, I was gonna call Crew up, uh, done, uh, Benny, when we've got questions for Betty. Completed, yeah.
Um, I was just gonna say, I think if Crew draws their own definition, they can definitely, once reviewing the manual, can deliver that definition to the committee and have it dictated into the manual.
Yeah, I'm not saying you have to use our definition, I'm just saying, like, you've been through it, and we're happy to tell you what we know.
Absolutely. I was just remarking that I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse here, as they have yet to review the manual, and if they have the concerns that they still would need to talk to the committee about it.
Well, let's, uh, let's see what they have to say tonight. I mean, again, my apologies, my vision for this meeting was that the manual will be done, it would already be to, uh, Crew in advance of this meeting, and that we would have, uh, more information to share. But we are where we are, and we will take advantage of what we've got and understand that we've got more work to do going forward.
Absolutely.
Any other question for Betty? Thank you so much for all your work on Betty.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right, Crew? Mike and Bill?
I'm just online.
Good evening. Okay, welcome. Thank you. Uh, your names just for the record.
I'm Bill Shepley, uh, Chair of Crew.
Uh, Mike Dacey, Construction Manager for Crew. And we have Tessie Yip, who's a board member.
Yeah, Tess is here, too.
All right.
Hi, everybody.
And again, apologies for the late, uh, arrival of, uh, the, uh, manual, but, uh, I guess getting to the, the point that, uh, Tom was identifying, that, that Mike alluded to, where do you draw the line, and how do you see yourselves taking over, and what, what might be helpful for you to have in place when you do take over?
Um, well, I'll let, I'll let Mike speak to that in a minute. Um, I met with a couple of the select board members and Tom a week or so ago, um, and, you know, I don't want to throw stones, but this process is just a head-scratcher for me, in that there's been no communication from this committee with Crew at all. And everybody's been saying, well, Crew's done such a great job of, of doing the immediate response, and they're preparing an immediate response manual. I'm not sure why Crew wasn't invited to have some input into the process. We had one. We had one meeting, I think, here that everyone was at. And we were just told, well, we, the committee, are going to put together this document and then we're going to share it. And I'm not sure why it had to be done in that fashion. But we are where we are. I want to reiterate what Mike said a minute ago in that Crew was founded last August after the July 23 flood to be the Long-Term Recovery Committee for the community, the Long-Term Recovery Group. And, you know, FEMA, it's kind of ingrained in the FEMA process that you have to have these long-term recovery groups if you're going to have good access to FEMA recovery dollars. And we've been trying to concentrate on the long-term recovery things, being able to move, get people or show people or have workshops and raise money to help people move their utilities, move their heating systems, do floodproofing of their properties. Crew itself has never been part of the immediate response. Members of Crew have been here and have, you know, some of them, Liz in particular, has done this three times now. But Crew was never a part of the immediate recovery process. People who migrated to Crew, Nora came here in July of 2023 to see what she could do to help administratively and from there kind of migrated to Crew. And when 24's flood happened and December's flood happened, those people again stepped up. And I'm not trying to say, you know, Crew doesn't want to have anything to do with the short-term recovery, but it's not Crew's mission and we've got to figure it out, I think. And this is the process that you've chosen to figure it out. So we want to move forward too. And we want everybody, the select board, the town manager, the staff, the, you know, the Preparedness Committee. We want everyone to know what all of our roles are. So we'll get there. I'm confident that we'll get there. But I'm gonna let Mike talk a little bit now because, you know, Mike is involved in the day-to-day long-term recovery and was here and very active, especially in the 24 flood. I'm not sure exactly when he came on board in 2023, but, you know, I've been working with him for months now, for over a year now on Crew. But he has really, I think, the best grasp on what's happening in terms of the long-term recovery process and getting people back into their houses and businesses and having them be more resilient than they were before. At least that's what the goal is. So I'll let you take it.
Yeah, before you start, I just wanted to thank Bill and others on Crew, both for stepping forward and founding this organization to take on long-term recovery because it is an essential part of the FEMA process. But also members that have stepped forward for the immediate response. And I think that is well-recognized throughout the town, all the work that various members of Crew have put in to really be lifesavers in many ways for individuals throughout this town.
Thank you, thank you. And for the, on behalf of the folks from Crew, especially those who really did a whole lot more than I did in the immediate aftermath of these floods. I mean, I've mucked out a couple of places, but I haven't been as involved as folks like Mike and others have been. But thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
So I guess to... I don't think, right now, we need to get too into the weeds on the definitions that Crew draws. We're happy to go over that with the Disaster Preparedness Committee and it'll probably make more sense in context after we see the handbook and stuff. I brought that up kind of along the lines of what Bill was mentioning about, I do think we've been a little confused at the process and just sort of how the book came together. It seems to be, again, it's water under the bridge, but maybe not the most efficient way to create a document like this. That said, I'm excited to look at it. You know, these are the ideas that I think about when waking up in the middle of the night and all this stuff, and Matt and I have certainly had conversations, like definitely when we were in the thick of the cleanup of that stuff. And it's a very sort of startup-like process. You're constantly thinking, oh, well, tomorrow when we do this thing again, we'll make this tweak and we'll do it better. And so ultimately, I think everybody wants more resilience town. And I think we're gonna get there in some way. But yeah.
And I'll just, you know, apologize on behalf of this select board. I readily admit that this could have been done better. Committee management is a bit of an art. And they sort of take on responsibilities and they move forward. The best way that they seem how, I think that they've done a great job. But certainly in hindsight, there should have been more interaction between Crew and...
And we appreciate that, and maybe that's the last time any of us have to mention that again.
Yes.
It's water under the bridge is a good description. We can't go back. If we ever needed this, something like this again, we'd do it differently. But, you know, we are where we are now and we all want to move forward. And I think, I think we can do that. So, but thank you.
And I also appreciate that I'm one of the very few people that is doing this stuff as a job during the day and that all the members of this committee have other jobs, all the members of the Disaster Preparedness Committee have other things that they're doing. So, yeah, it's, everybody's busy. But yeah, as far as the long-term things that Crew has been working on since last year, and I guess just a little bit of backstory, I came on. I had done some volunteering last July. There were some remaining construction-related projects in the fall that I got asked to help out with. And things sort of started rolling on that sense. And then we got hit with December, and so I helped out a lot in the December response. And things kind of started continuing to roll from there. Here we are. The long-term stuff that we deal with ranges from, you know, on the extreme long-term, it's the buyouts and the elevation stuff that we're talking to people about relocating, that kind of thing. It's lining up repair projects. Oftentimes, they are utility or, you might say, resilience-related, helping people find funding and/or labor for those if they are not in the position to have access to that themselves. It is, yeah, a lot of managing of little projects that seem to take forever. And that's, and we're still dealing with stuff from a year ago.
And we have an outreach coordinator who's helping people navigate the FEMA process.
So in the shorter term.
Bringing them to, you know, to the inevitable, you know, rejection or, you know, FEMA's saying, you don't qualify, and then forcing people to appeal. And we try to hold people's hands through that process, get them through that process. We've, the outreach coordinator and other members of Crew have advocated for these people at the state's table of last resort, Vermont Community Foundation. So we're doing that. We have a structural engineer, I guess, right, from Richmond, professional engineer that, you know, he's a private contractor and Crew is raising money. And he's, what kind of things is he looking at for long-term?
So he has been doing assessments in homes that have sustained water damage. And we have such a variety of home styles of building in Waterbury. Everything from construction types and essentially foundation types. And so you might have a stacked stone foundation that's 200 years old or you might have a concrete foundation that was done 30 years ago or something. But he is able to assess the condition, assess what may, if there's damage that may have, that may be due to the fact that it's 200 years old or it may have occurred a year ago. And identifying paths forward, depending on what the homeowner's looking to do. We've gotten a lot of questions from folks that are saying, can I elevate my home if I have this type of foundation? And you can provide guidance there. Or saying, should I just fill in my basement? If I'm not gonna have anything down there anymore, he can provide guidance there. And, or if there's any urgent, immediate issues that he sees during his assessment, he can provide guidance on how to address those. So that's been quite helpful.
We've helped folks with whole basement, some pump situations, floodproofing, waterproofing, I mean.
Yep.
And then utility relocations.
Yeah.
Boilers and furnaces. Trying to push heat pumps where we can, you know.
Yeah.
At least give people the opportunity to look at that as an option to see whether or not it can work in their building.
Yeah, efficiency. Vermont has a lot of incentive programs and we can help people navigate those if they need to. Oftentimes, we're just a growing rolodex of flood recovery-related services. And so we may not hold somebody's hand through the process, but if we can give them three phone numbers of a specialty contractor, that's gonna save them time. And we end up being the first call they make anyways. It's totally overwhelming, as Betty was mentioning before. And so I think just having a known resource when people are in the state that they're in.
The other thing to kind of note, as we go back to the Preparedness Committee, its work and its relationship with Crew and what will happen. And Tom asked some good questions at the meeting that I was at with him a week or so ago. But just so everybody is aware, you know, Crew serves five communities, Ducksbury, Mooretown, Middlesex, Bolton, and Waterbury. The Preparedness Committee work is really just for Waterbury. And, you know, finding that line where response and immediate relief ends and where longer-term recovery stuff begins is important for Waterbury because, you know, we've tried hard, from Crew's perspective, to use the resources that Waterbury has paid for in Waterbury. So I'm not saying that maybe a dehumidifier that the town rented didn't get to Ducksbury at one point, but I don't think it did. We tried hard to make sure that the equipment that Waterbury purchased for what I believe it was the immediate response. And I think dehumidification right after mucking out is more immediate response than it is long-term recovery. But those assets that the town paid for were used in Waterbury. And we really tried to make that, you know, a priority. But Crew has responsibilities in other towns. And all of what Mike just described is happening in the other places as well that, you know, Crew is raising money to do. So that's another kind of twist that we have to just keep in mind as we put together a map about going forward, that, you know, Crew's responsibility is more broad from a standpoint of the towns that it serves than Waterbury's.
How did you set that zone for your zone operations?
Yeah.
How? How did you decide on those five communities?
Well, we had people from those communities that were coming here initially for the immediate response to just get help because their towns weren't able to do anything or didn't do anything, very little, I guess. And we had people, you know, we have people on the Crew board from Mooretown and from Ducksbury, not sure about Middlesex. But, you know, that's what we did. I'm not sure I can answer the question completely, Roger, how we chose those towns. But I think it was people coming in, looking for assistance and knowing that the FEMA process was requiring the long-term community, the long-term recovery groups to be involved. So we kind of drew those boundaries, I think, based on somewhat on what people were looking for.
So. And, you know, I ask you in part because ostensibly, preparedness is going to make your work easier if people have less stuff in their basement.
Yeah, absolutely.
If they have already moved their utilities up and taken the other measures that Mike was going through. And so I'm wondering, you know, should we be in touch? Like, I did talk with my counterpart in Middlesex the other day who mentioned that Crew, she's getting comments from her townspeople, that Crew is doing more work than the town of Middlesex is. A little bit remiss about that, but, you know, congratulations to you for getting recognition. And just, you know, wondering, yes, Waterbury is going to sort of further develop and codify our plan for preparedness. Should we be in touch with other towns?
Yeah, I think that probably we should be. And, you know, the Preparedness Committee, their document, whatever the final product is, certainly, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with sharing that. It's public information and having the other communities have that information and making that available to their residents to help them do the obvious things that you just mentioned, you know, which equals. Maybe we should just consider the basement is part of the river and we shouldn't have anything down there that, you know...
We need to see that towards the line.
We need. So anyway, but, you know, so that's a good point. But I did want to make it clear that Crew is really making a concerted effort to use the money that Waterbury has provided for the immediate relief in Waterbury. And, you know, going forward, as I mentioned to you folks in the meeting when we were here, you know, there may be an ask at a future town meeting for some money, but we're committed, if we do decide to ask Waterbury for money, we will be asking the other four towns for money as well. There's no expectation that Waterbury will, you know, exclusively fund these efforts. And, you know, it's a testament to Waterbury in that... And, you know, it's, it's a testament to Waterbury in that, you know, of the towns around here, we have a robust staff, whereas the other communities have a town clerk and a select board and not much else.
Well, we also have more than 5,000 people in those two thousand percent.
Exactly. So those folks who are indeed, you know, they're, they're going to go to the place that they think they can get some help. And that's why, you know, they were coming here during the initial, you know, right after the disaster occurred because we had set something up and the folks, some of the folks who were on Crew and some other folks like Alyssa and Kane and others were here right after the disaster, both in, you know, July, well, twice, July and December and this July. And, you know, we, we acknowledge that there's, there's a lot of people that came in and helped and then of course the volunteers that we, none of us could really live without. So we want to be able to be in a position to marshal those assets as efficiently as we can to provide the relief that we need. Did you have a question, Tom?
Just wondering, and again, is this, is Crew the long-term recovery group for other towns?
Yeah, for.
Officially?
For the five towns, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's weird. I don't think that there's, I don't think that towns officially designate their long-term recovery groups. We had this conversation, I brought it up when we were first formulating our bylaws last summer. And I thought that we should be asking the select board to designate us as the long-term recovery group. But the word back, at least through Liz and Nora, was that FEMA said, no, that's not how this works. It's not the towns that, that identify the long-term recovery groups. And I said, well, so do they happen organically? We just kind of pop out of the mud?
I mean, I think, you know, if you look at last year when the flood happened on a map, and we know towns in Vermont related to geographic, geologic features make no sense. But if you look at where flooding was last year when it was just the river coming up, it was a line along Route Two through these five communities. Waterbury is right in the center and it is, if you ask someone who happens to live in Middlesex on Route Two, like where's your downtown? To facto, it's kind of, they're going to say Waterbury Village is kind of like the crossroads of the area. Now that we're dealing with.
July of '24.
July of '24 and flooding away from rivers, it's a little different. But I think it did make a lot of sense if you circled the area that was affected and then you listed the towns that it was in, that, and it was more or less along kind of one stretch.
Bill, is, is it a function that FEMA doesn't believe, you know, a town should be designated things is because nationally, town government is not important, it's county government.
FEMA, FEMA has a tough time working in New England.
Because it's the town government.
In Vermont in particular, because Vermont, you know, other towns in New England still have town meeting, but in Vermont, it's, it's much more, you know.
Right.
Kind of ingrained in the bedrock, if you will. So FEMA, FEMA has challenges in terms of how Vermont works. And frankly, I think the state has challenges working with FEMA because of how FEMA works in other places. And, you know, the, the time it took to get the disaster declaration from the July storm this year was just like, come on. I mean, how bad does it have to be? And, you know, it, it took the state a long time to be able to, to get that declaration. And that, that's unfortunate because FEMA can't do anything until there's a declaration. And they didn't open up shop here until, I don't know, the end of August or?
Yeah, last month.
Yeah, so that was, that was a challenge.
And Senator Welch has quite vocally said that FEMA needs to be reformed. I don't know, have you been in touch with his office and do you think that is going to take place?
Yeah, I, I don't think we have been in touch with his office. It's something, you know, maybe we should think about. But, you know, I think, you know, given what just happened, I, I just got back from Atlanta, was on the Panhandle, left Wednesday morning and, you know, Big Ben got slammed on Thursday afternoon. And I went back to Atlanta and, you know, fortunately for my daughter and family, the storm tracked a little bit to the east and western Georgia, basically a line, you know, from Atlanta west, got a lot of rain. From Atlanta east, and, you know, they got a lot of rain and they got a lot of wind and it's devastation there. And, you know, FEMA is already out of money.
Right.
They're, they're working on continuing resolutions, if that. They're borrowing money from Peter to PayPal, basically internally. And, you know, October 1st is tomorrow and I don't think they have a budget. They, they, they didn't shut the government down, but I don't think FEMA got their budget. So there's a lot of challenges. And, you know, I think there's another hurricane in the Gulf now or in the Caribbean that, that they're hoping goes somewhere other than where it just went last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're really banking on a track in north of the Atlantic. Let's see.
Other questions for Crew?
I just wanted to say that in, I believe it was the first week of August, last year when I pitched the committee to the select board, it was after watching Crew or what would become Crew manage the immediate aftermath of the flood and realizing that people like Liz and people like Bill, who have knowledge, extensive knowledge of this town and remember what happened during Irene and it was incredibly helpful to know those things because I was not in Waterbury during Irene. I was in Montpelier even during this, man. You're not going to be around forever.
When I leave now?
Keep breathing. And what, what I started to think was that we need a plan for every time this is going to happen. We need something on the books.
That's a great idea.
Oh, right. We need people we can call. We need someone who we know is going to coordinate every time this happens or someone we know, or a job description for someone who can walk into the role and coordinate for when this happens again. We can't just keep relying on the good hearts of our senior population.
And I think that, I think, well, I wouldn't go so far as call, there's a senior yet, so don't let it hurt you, but. But, you know, I think, I think the idea for the committee was a good one. And I think the Preparedness Committee and, you know, having an inventory of, or identifying what we need to have, what we need to have on hand, what we need to have if it happens and know where you can get it and you don't have to, you know, store everything that you need. I think all those things are great. I did say in the meeting that I had with Tom and a couple of the select board members last week, and I think I heard you say it earlier tonight, I think that there needs to be somebody whose job is to be able to coordinate the volunteers and the immediate response. And whether that, there's a lot of iterations as how that job can be, you know? Should it be like, you know, a fire chief and it's, there's a stipend and, and then if you have to do something, they get, they get paid? Should it be a part-time or full-time position that can also be a, you know, grant writer looking for funding kind of stuff? Those are things that you all have to kind of figure out. But I think that where we're going, we're going in the right direction and we've had some fits and starts. This is new for everyone. It would have been really great if we could have established the Preparedness Committee in, in, you know, later in 2023 and have them still being preparing for what's next. And we've had two other events since that. And that, that's caused problems for everybody. And, and we're hopeful that we don't have another one anytime real soon so that we can get this document in final shape and then, you know, you folks can evaluate it and figure out how you're going to implement it and whether it needs staffing or not or funding or not, that's your job. But we're here, we want to concentrate on the long-term recovery stuff and we'll work with the Preparedness Committee and the select board to try to define where, you know, initial response and recovery happens, you know, immediate recovery and then where long-term recovery stuff. So thanks for your time.
Yeah.
Yeah, just curious, I mean, I appreciate that and I, this conversation's been awesome. One thing I do think is, you know, timelines and how, you know, I'd love to get Crew's eyes on this document and you guys to put your input. There's a lot of knowledge that you guys will bring to this document. Do we have any sort of?
Yeah, well, are we meeting tomorrow? I couldn't figure it out from the emails that they sent.
We are, unless there's been something new, we've, we do have our monthly meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm not sure if everyone's going to have time to read it.
Yeah, I doubt we'll be able to talk about it tomorrow. And we are meeting monthly right now. So, you know, I think what will probably happen is we'll, Mike and I will, and Tessa will debrief the committee tomorrow about this meeting. We'll encourage people to read the document and then try to, to, you know, speak about it together in our October meeting. We'll try to expedite it as, as quickly as possible, but as Mike said, you know, most of the members of Crew have urban jobs and, and just, you know, meeting every week for a year was tough. And a lot of us did that. Nobody made every meeting, but that just wasn't sustainable. We felt we had to do it just to get through July and December. And then of course, we talked in June about going to monthly meetings in July this year. So anyway, we'll try to do it as quickly as possible. So I'd like to say after our, well, our October meeting is tomorrow night. So after our November meeting, we'll try to get something back. And I think it would be most efficient if we get it back both to the Preparedness Committee and the Select Board. You folks should read it over the next time, whatever comments you may have, you know, try to share with everybody, but.
All right, thanks. And before you leave, I just wanted to recognize Tessa and Liz for.
Laura's here too now.
Putting on the workshop last Wednesday, but that was nicely done. Appreciate your, your work on that. One of the questions I have at that meeting was whether there's any intention of, of working with blocks, like neighborhood blocks, like looking at Route Two as a group or South Main as a group or Elm and Randall as a group? Just because if we're talking about elevation, it might make more sense for, to try to work with, with the whole neighborhood rather than individually.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about that and, you know, the challenges, just being able to, with people's everyday work schedules, trying to put those kind of things together. But yes, I think we, we believe that.
It has happened.
To do it that, to do it that way.
Yeah. Just naturally, some small pockets and stuff.
And, you know, we've, we've done a little bit with kind of the neighborhood way. And then we've also tried to segregate it, if you will, by need. So people who are interested in utility relocations or, or elevations, you know, not everybody's interested in elevation. So we've had workshops on that kind of stuff. So we, we try to meet and, and get groups of people where we can.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any other questions? Yeah, Tessa, go ahead.
Really quick, since Crew does have our board meeting tomorrow, are there other, any other questions the select board is looking for answers to that the whole board should discuss as a group? We probably can't give the manual fully tomorrow, but is there anything else that, you know, the select board is looking for answers to that we could come back with answers for the next meeting?
You know, one thing that occurred to me is I was looking at the report from the long-term recovery report from 2013 after Irene. And one of the things was providing cost information on projects that we've already, you know, various types of projects. What would this cost to elevate? What does it cost to put in heat pumps, elevate utilities, et cetera? And just one, one of the recommendations was to make that information more freely available. So I'm just wondering if you and the board might consider putting on, putting up a website or, or some other way to make that information more accessible to, to Waterbury residents?
Okay, yeah.
Good suggestion. Okay, great. Any other?
Any other questions?
Yeah, Alyssa.
Well, I just think in light of this conversation, I mean, my general understanding, but check for understanding from the board is we would love to, I mean, you've already shared it here tonight, but know what Crew does and does not see the ability to take on with regards to how it's framed in this document. Again, I think that's likely going to come out through the editing, but.
Right.
I mean, big picture for us, we want to know what you want to do so we know you're going to do it. And those are things that go to you and what you don't want to do so we know others need to be doing that. And I guess, and then if there's other specific asks or needs to support your work, just acknowledging you all have, you know, submitted the letter about the grant writing position, but if there's other things that it feels important for us as the select board to be considering for the town, certainly we'd want to know those too.
Great, thank you.
Norah, Bill, I had her hand up.
Who does?
Norah. She doesn't have a hand.
Norah?
She came down.
Uh, Norah, you want to?
Put my hand up, but then I put it down. Roger, I was just going to say, I'm not sure we have great data on what kind of the average cost would be for some of those projects because we haven't done elevations yet and so few people have moved their utilities up. But we can try and collect some of it and it would probably come from the community that we would get that information, but happy to share it. And Mike, we can work together on trying to figure out what like average cost would be for various projects.
Yeah, Efficiency Vermont might be someone to, to link up with on that as well because they would have maybe an idea of installation.
Statewide.
I've done a bunch of that stuff, I'd be glad to share.
Yeah, it'll be our first data point.
And, and as you all know, I think, you know, elevations are kind of the diceiest things. They're, they're one of the most extreme things that can be done. What's the, is it 225, Tom?
228.
228. So if it's, if it's going to cost more than that, FEMA won't, FEMA won't be involved because it automatically doesn't meet their cost benefit threshold. But there are some people who have some means and they're willing to do it on their own or they don't want to wait as long as the FEMA process takes. So that's a challenging one, but it's a good question, Roger, and we'll try to get as much information about those kinds of things as we can.
And, you know, Rick Weston, who's one of those individuals, was participating in Tessa's workshop and some of those people did share some of that cost information. So.
Good to do it.
Somebody I'd like to work with. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks, Tessa. Norah? All right. Mediation is the last subtopic on this. I did want to just acknowledge that someone asked about the cornfield, happened to be Jess Burl, who's partnering with Brian Kravitz, who is one of the people who's been most affected by flooding on Randall Street. And I shared with him that Tom and I met with the Commissioner of Buildings and General Services, I guess probably three weeks ago now. And during the conversation, we. And during the conversation, we expressed an interest in the town taking over management of the state cornfield. And she agreed in principle to turn that over to the town without cost to the town and that they would clear the accumulated silt before turning it over to us. That, however, will take an act of the state legislature. And I believe Tom's been in touch with our state representatives to get that initiated. But that is one act of mitigation which was identified post-Irene. And so, and Tom has applied for funding for the engineering for that to begin. We've also retained the services of Roy Schiff, who once leaves fall, will be taking a look at some LiDAR data and has agreed to do some modeling to look at what would happen under certain circumstances if we make some mitigation efforts. We have fields below the sewage treatment plant, which is not being currently used, which could have some impact on flooding. And there are some other areas up near the ice center and also along Bachelor Brook, all of which could have various impacts on the floods. So we'll be looking at that later this winter. Tom, I don't know if December is too early.
I think so, yeah. But it's still to be done. Yeah, no, the work won't be done by then.
No, it won't be. Work won't be done by then, but maybe January or something like that.
We've got to have some insight, I think. We might have the formal study, but we might have some insight as to what projects we yield what can.
Okay. And we've also been talking with the governor and the flood disasters are Doug Farnham about broader impacts throughout this along the corridor. So, some of those conversations are in play and we'll be getting out more information as it becomes available. I don't know if anyone else has anything else they wanna ask or suggest on that. Unfortunately, it's a slow process.
I guess my only question would be, as far as the cornfield goes, would it be worth asking preliminarily if we could potentially remove the silt earlier than the state could get to it?
So, they owned it during the last street flood. And based on that orange FEMA well, they've applied for FEMA to have funds paid for the silver level. So, it's gotta be the landlord who does that in this case. So I don't think there's any benefit. The other piece is, before we own it, one, it'd be nice to see the hydrologist studies in terms of what the real impact is going to be. But two, I wanna do some environmental work to make sure there's nothing there that we don't wanna own. So it's, there's a few what ifs involved here still. I don't know of any real history offhand with that cornfield. I guess the resident historians get it, and if you didn't think there was anything to be concerned about per se, but it doesn't mean you don't do some work there.
Well, you could look further back. By any kind of riverside things, native kind of sites, I would not be at all surprised to see that there's some sort of historic Indian...
Yeah, 100% dig with a heart of fat.
Exactly.
It's a process for sure.
All right. Other questions, comments about flood issues, Tom?
Just one thing. So we now have three, FEMA has, we've submitted eight properties for FEMA buyouts. Three have now been formally approved, which means, and for two, three at least, 33 North Main and then the two vacancies on Union. I think those are 36 and 40, but maybe 38 and 42, I get confused, but.
I think 40 is the last one, really.
So there are grant contracts in place with the state and FEMA. We are still, I am told, something like three months away from FEMA, from the state really Emergency Management completing the appraisals because they're doing that for all their buyouts statewide. So it's three months or so before the property owners have a number. And then it's something like 20 months to two years until it's a done deal and the project is closed.
Two years?
Two years from here. And these were all three properties where the applications went in six, nine months ago. So it's a long way to the finish line.
Tom, who would own the property after FEMA crosses?
The town.
Town.
Oh, with the covenant that nothing can be built there.
We're gonna be proud of ours, there's some super sweet parking lots.
I don't think we can even pave it.
You can pave it. You can gravitate.
You can gravitate.
Yeah, which is interesting because the state's law rules don't consider gravel curvaceous, but FEMA seems to disagree on this one. So for now, we're considering gravel parking lot.
Yeah, well, it's just no stack construction. Nothing that can be cemented in the ground.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for all your participation. Next on the agenda is the outreach plan for Woody Avenue. For those that are not aware, Woody Avenue is the new name for what used to be called Armory Street. But apparently that was too confusing to have Armory Drive and Armory Street, so that 911 asked us for a new name, and it's now called Woody Avenue.
Let me just share this real quick. I think this is how I think I'll open it and then share it, but. Oh, maybe I can't. Had it open earlier, but apparently I'm not able to right now. Well, the short version is, and I guess I'll go back, the proposal up on Hillcrest for the development lots had several lots in Hillcrest Harrison. One of them would have involved modifying some of the town land that's designated as permanent preservation. So I talked to Parks and Parks at the state, which manages that process. If we're going to convert land to allow for that lot to be developed and we have adequate other land on the site that could be permanently preserved. And the answer I got from the state was, it's a process, they're happy to work with us. The, after our conversation, they seem reasonably confident in the background research we have done, and the broad scope proposal made sense, but it's a long process. So I was told probably a couple of years to have that completed. And it's not a matter of sweetening the thought to say, we're proposing to subdivide a 6,300 acre square foot lot. Here's 6,300 other square feet, and we can sweeten it, make it 12,000 square feet. That's not the issue. The land you lose and the land you gain, they'll go through analysis to be sure that the recreational value is the same. And that's part of the process. It also has to be approved by the federal government. And that's a long part of the process. So the short revision is that we will have a different map soon that will have likely a phase two as part of this because that lot is simply not available anytime in the near future.
So we do start with the park that's unencumbered. And then phase two would be dealing with the land swap, the park that's connected by the land swap.
And then the school has always had an informal walkway to reach that recreational land. So I emailed John Grenier and I said, let's go ahead and skin together a more formal path. I'm not sure they need it to be right, but let's at least put that on the map. And then I also suggested, and this can come out later, but I also suggested that I think the top parcels on Hillcrest and all the way down Woody Avenue would be good candidates for sidewalks, especially if part of Woody Avenue is considered a multifamily housing. They could connect into High Street. Running the sidewalks and high streets are in need of replacement, but that's a different conversation for a different time. So that was a little disappointing to hear it was gonna be such a long process, but it is what it is. It's like a FEMA buyout, you just gotta go through the steps. And then Alyssa wanted some additional dates to consider. The DRB is meeting on the 16th, and they have a pretty full agenda. And apparently there are rules about DRB hearings where they're not allowed to, in essence, have a public comment here for items on the agenda. So we can't just go in and have a conversation about some proposals. So we're gonna see if, I'm gonna see if they can maybe hold a special meeting in October or perhaps put us at the front of the 16th agenda and get there early to talk about it, introduce the concepts. And then similarly, the Housing Task Force is the 17th for this one. So hopefully we can have a more detailed sketch plan ready by then and a more detailed conversation with the task force about that.
Can you make me a co-host so I can screen share? Did like write a thing to, if that's all right, Roger?
Sure. If you do that, I'm sure, I just gotta figure it out, Alyssa.
To say, go to participant, oh, yeah. Yay! Can I send this so I can screen share?
More use on Tom, I have some stuff I wanna talk more about, community engagement, such.
Yes.
Kind of everything. Okay, so one just comment. Should've done this earlier while Tom was sharing with the first proposal that Tom was mentioning is in a previous Select Board packet. So that is online for anyone who wants to look at it. But I guess I would say, my idea is in the interest of candidly a lot of what we spent our discussion on here tonight, which is like, we didn't know what this group was doing, we didn't know what this group was doing. And maybe we should've got everyone together to like just take a step back and think about, you know, in my perspective, this is an incredibly exciting opportunity around having town land that maybe could help with housing. And that's a pressing need and really important for us. And just acknowledging Tom as a manager and is incredibly good at taking town staff and finding the behind the scenes details of how we change our conservation restriction. And then there's like a full center of public participation where you could like, do a whole design charrette and hire someone to help the community plan. To be clear, I'm not proposing that. I don't think that's the right fit for that project. I think we wanna get this going sooner than later. But I also think it would be a really big mistake in oversight for us on behalf of the board to not get input from community members, neighbors, boards and commissions. And so my proposal, unfortunately, we're running right around on schedule. We have a moment for that. So when I was frantically sitting at work, 'cause I've been away for a week and prepping for this, I leaned on the Community Planning Toolbox and just wanted to be clear, this first page that says from the Community Planning Toolbox is not something I wrote. This is something, it was originally Smart Growth Vermont. It's now hosted by the Vermont Natural Resources Council. I'm not saying, again, this is perfect or whatnot. I just wanted to have something for us to have discussion. So this is a resource guide they've had for communities doing community engagement. I recognize outreach and engagement are different. There's just telling people about what you're doing, and there is asking for their input. And again, my personal belief is we kinda wanna thread the needle in the hole on this. But the pieces that I printed out for everyone, and I can screen share as well, was just around saying like, you know, why do we wanna include the public? What info do we wanna get? I think we recognize this is something, as Tom was just alluding to, that has some really specific constraints. So we're not saying, design this from scratch. But personally, I'd be really interested if people have particular ideas or strong feelings about what we wanna see here. I then copied, they have a bunch of like different strategies. Again, I'm not saying, I think design charrette is the right thing. I think a survey or a focus group maybe might add a lot. And I recognize, again, we're all seeing this for the first time right now, but just wanted to like have this out so we could have some common language. And then on the back, I just bulleted like as many bullets as I could quickly of kind of like the different things we have to do. Again, at various points, we have brought this to the Housing Task Force and other groups. And they've had specific questions. There's questions like what Tom just spoke to around like, what is literally happening on this site? Why can't it be built here? What is already happening? What can the zoning say? So some of those might be technical questions. There's also questions like, what priorities is the Select Board working on for this project? Like, why do you wanna do it? That was something the Housing Task Force asked. You know, is there a specific housing goal you're aiming at? So anyway, I just offer all this for us to have, as is permissible during this time. I think it would be great, in my head, like we could draw a little arrow for background and goals and say, we'll talk about that at the next meeting and maybe talk about some of the lower things on October 23rd. And I'm sure I've missed things, so if there's other things we wanted to talk about. I just felt like having a bit of a roadmap around meetings that we are planning to have with the public so that when people say, oh, my goodness, what is happening on Woody Ave., we can say, oh, we have this process. It started with this proposal. You know, we then came up with the following goals, and we had three meetings for input and a survey. I think recognizing being upfront, we can say, we, the Select Board, like are making the final call. We can choose to tell town land through an RFP process. But again, at least personally, I would feel better having some clearly outlined process. Again, I volunteered to knock on doors in the neighborhood and let them know about our next meeting while we're going over all of this. But that's my mini monologue.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think one issue that we might be able to take up now would be, what's our objective? Tom, you and Mike Bishop identified this property as having some potential of providing a partial solution to the lack of housing. And the Select Board did provide some direction to the Planning Commission in putting together the new regs for zoning in Phase 1, which is the side of the interstate, to increase housing density in this area of the town, given the fact that it does have access to water and sewer. And another issue is that we've been, that we've been working on for the past couple of years anyways, has been access to affordable housing, which we know is in short supply and doesn't seem to be being resolved by the open market building. So I think creating more housing, creating access to affordable housing, and then recently it's been mentioned that with at least three houses being bought out, that we might want to provide access to people in the flood area who will need new housing. So those are the three objectives that come to my mind. And I don't know if you and other members of the board might have others that we should consider.
And I think in theory, some of the land was offered to people who were either buyout candidates or in the flood plain. One of the challenges here, and I guess challenges and opportunities, that, you know, rough numbers, we think, we think that the sore line extension is $150,000. We're getting quotes on that, but we think it's $150,000. To build a 3,000 square foot storage building, you know, we're gonna get numbers on that, but call it another $150,000. Pretty simple steel frame building. That's if the DRB were to approve the design. We don't know yet what it costs to demolish the other building, but the asbestos samples came back positive, not a shock since we know it was asbestos shingles. But, you know, in my head, we're $500,000 or $600,000 of our own costs into the site. So we have seven lots.
It's $300,000 to deal with asbestos.
That's just a shot in the dark, but that's just kinda, we're just kinda... That's just a shot in the dark, but that's just kind of, we're just kind of taking around numbers.
Okay. Numbers are important.
Internally, so don't compete to those, but just for argument's sake. So I think if some of these flood victims want to move, and that's a select board objective in the end, I think that's something we can probably accommodate, but we'd also be mindful of our own costs. It could be that some of the lots have to be sold at pure market rate, which is going to be a pretty high number. But I know just from talking to several of the people who have saw buyouts, that if they pay market rate for a lot, then build a house, even a modest house, it's above their needs.
Yeah.
And so it's just not going to work for them. So perhaps there's some combination where enough of the lots are sold at a high enough rate that you can accommodate some affordable housing, whether it's for flood victims or otherwise. But I think that objective, at least in my mind, is always to break even first. And if there's a problem beyond that, then perhaps move it to the site in other ways.
There's been some mention of involving habitat for humanity.
And they did have a conversation with them, and I think what it boils down to is, is their development costs are not necessarily lower than anyone else's. And so for them, getting land for free or a deep, deep discount is likely necessary.
They have the capacity to fundraise.
Yes.
One other possibility is, and which has been used in Wattemurray in the past, is using home funds, where you have kind of a shared equity situation. Some people don't like, you know, that they want to buy a house because they expect to have a full share of equity and get that so they could hopefully move on. Shared equity does accommodate someone living in a house, but it does limit what their potential equity, because it would, like usually, like the purveyor in Washington County has been Downstreet, and they have developed, like Meadowcrest, there are a bunch of, I don't know a bunch, but there are definitely more than three or four lots that are shared equities up there. But again, the folks are looking at, if they're looking at for affordable mortgage that they could afford and live there, it's a good alternative. Whether it's going to be get them to buying the next house, it may not be such a good alternative, so you have to look at, you know, what people's goals are. But that program is an alternative for someone who wants, you know, needs affordable housing.
Right. And so Downstreet would have to be a partner in that program?
Or I would say Downstreet, because they have typically administered, you know, I don't know how active they have been in the last few years in Washington County administering, you know, home projects, just because, and even with the expensive cost, you know, Chris, what's the development cost per unit on construction nowadays versus single-family housing?
I think, Tom, maybe speak a little differently to this, but I mentioned it the other night, that square foot prices are in the $350 to $400 per square foot range.
A lesser figure. I was fancy as hell, so. I know we're talking fancy.
It's tough to develop a house at those, yeah.
Certainly having the water and sewer on site is a big advantage.
Right.
I feel like I'm going to stick to my guns on this one. I feel like breaking even should probably be the goal, as the second, or the first goal is to build affordable housing and maximize housing at that, especially because we have buyouts. Not only are we already in a housing crisis, but it is worsening by climate change. And so maximizing available units, I think, should be the goal.
What can I ask, Harvey? What's so specific about maintaining some form of a recreation space in that particular area, or would that be treated out?
So it's effectively program, it's a federal program by which Dakrow was acquired years and years ago, I think even before Bill's time probably, and the land is essentially deeded in perpetuity for recreation. And so when Town Hall and the library were built, there had to be a land swap, and so that land up there was part of the land swap, and I understand that was quite a long process.
Yeah, also, there's two land swaps that are involved in the area. It was when we built the fire suppression ward reset, and we had taken a little bit of the open park for the parking lot there, so that land swap was at that site. And then when we built this building, we moved that row land out, even though we left it as the garden, basically, probably the parking lot or the storm bridge impacted it, so we haven't swapped that. So there's two different swaps.
So you're suggesting we're swapped out and we couldn't do it again?
No, no, I'm just, I'm suggesting that it's a long process to complete it.
And the challenge is, where are you going to put the swap out?
Yeah, we have other land on the site that is not supposed to be developed, of probably three X the square footage we would need, and that's not, that's not the issue. The issue is just the academic part of completing it.
From far side of the hill?
No, the same side of the hill, just that the rocks are not, if Alyssa wants to pull up the max, real quick.
Guess what I was thinking is if you could swap that out for another piece, either a couple of FEMA buyouts that are going to get demolished.
So this lot here is about 6,300 square feet, and all of this land here could be added, and it's a lot more than 6,300 square feet, so there's plenty of room to do it. And in fact, to offer the government, federal government, more land than we have now reserved for recreation.
So some ones on the corner?
Just one.
Okay.
Just the final lot here.
Oh, I see.
And so for now.
So you want to swap the part in the middle there for that one on the lower right?
Yeah. And we had thought initially it was not quite so conversable process.
Well, that middle part there is hillside, isn't it? What are those other circles, the corner lot, the middle one? Indicators?
I don't know, but I don't know offhand.
Might it be, might it be a heightened area?
Could be a contour, maybe.
Yeah.
I guess to finish my point here, I was thinking that if you could, somehow swap that out for that recreational area for someplace completely different. If you're going to put, expend money to put a sewage point in there to the water, if you could increase the amount of affordable housing in some manner, it's going to boost the cost a little bit more, you know, so somehow you could turn from that recreation place, spot to somewhere else, and turn what would have been recreational housing, consolidate, keep it in this one spot, and put your work.
So the challenge is, you said the buyouts, only after 24 months, and then at that point, it's a two-year process to get that thing.
Yeah, and I don't know if that would allow the process if somehow they would, FEMA has its own restrictions, and I don't know if they want to put on that road.
Yeah, it's two years, having a site that's ready to go. They don't control that site, they won't control those places for two years. They're two years beyond that.
Yeah, further delay.
I have another question. I'm just wondering if there's something actually recreation related on that spot right now?
So the school, there is a walkway, and the school does go back, and normally the kids go there, I think on a pretty routine basis.
Is that the one that you get to like by the, if only it's already there?
Yes.
That didn't look like the same spot on the map.
Well, what they may use may not be the permanently preserved land.
Is there a way, is there a way to begin the subdivision process excluding the preserved land?
Yes, 100%.
And, yeah, that I firmly believe that that is probably the avenue we should pursue.
And then perhaps in two years, there's one more lot to, you know, consider.
Right. Just wondering, it looked as though there's still some land in the middle there between the conserved land and the road frontage where we're planning to, or we're supposing to put some housing. Have you considered developing that middle area as well?
So, yes, but the thought was, part of this is silly. There's, you know, we believe some place loyalty issues there that make it a little tougher, and then part of it was, we wanted to avoid encroaching upon the flagpole in that area. So yeah, we could certainly redesign the site for more density if that was a goal.
That's my question, not to say, but like if Kane says maximize number of units, everyone agrees it, to be clear, I'm saying this to make a point, but like, I don't know, it's probably 30 feet, you could probably cram a whole ton of units there. I think, I think we want to land somewhere in the middle, but I just think, I think the three goals broadly are right. I think, my point is we need to have a little bit finer point on what specifically we're doing. I would say like from the Housing Task Force, homeownership is really interesting, like to be there. I think that is, I think there's a lot of implicit things we're talking about. So again, appreciate that we're having this conversation. And I think if we figure out what our bottom line is, we also, you know, I don't know if this came up, but like, Tom, sorry if I'm wrong, but, I'm just sharing my other opinion here. There was some notion that like, you know, we're designing this by consensus around the table, but towns put out a thing and say, "We've got a really nice lot, we're going to sell it to you for a dollar, let us know how many units you can put on it." So if that's somewhere we're going, you know, their first qualification is understanding of the project goals, and this is Bellows Falls, I should just say, or anyone that came through a list survey on.
It's the same thing.
But just to name, you know, they're saying that they're specifically looking for, you know, market rate housing and things like that, so I think if we want to say, you know, we want a number of units or something like that, I think this is all great, and I want to hear this from all of us, again, in front of the community, and at a certain point, if we say our bottom line is, you know, at least 20 units and worth of the cost, I think that works.
That sounds great to me. Hit the nail on the head.
Well, I think we really need to have some sort of strategy. Do we want, are we looking at developing single-family housing, or are we looking at developing multifamily housing, or are we looking at, I know, a combination? Sometimes it's easy to go in one direction or the other, and you have to look at what maximizes your returns. You know, single-family sometimes can be easier than multifamily, but multifamily may house more people who are being underserved.
So from my perspective, just in talking with developers, there is likely not the same developers that would launch the whole project, the folks that do single-family.
They're two different teams.
Two different teams, and so from my perspective, if you wanted to, one approach that I think about is that I think the lots at the top on Hillcrest are, if there's single-family homes there, they're very consistent with what, with the built environment around them, and that's where the margin is. You know, just from my observation, those are six-figure lots. And that's where, that's where the margin for the town is made to cover the expenses. The multifamily, you know, there's a reason multifamily housing is not being built at a high rate, and a lot of it is subsidized through some form of grants. It's a different developer likely that would want to do multifamily on the other part of the lot. And to some extent, I think, you know, the document that Alyssa referenced from Bellows Falls, to some extent, those developers, we put out a document and asked the developers to tell us what they would build, and what they would pay us for the lots, based on what they're building. So I think we can request density, but if they want to do condos versus triplexes, that's up to them.
It's the only one that's probably going to want to do some form of multifamily housing project is someone that's well skilled in tax credits, because that's, tax credits what makes multifamily housing. You know, if you don't use tax credits, there's very little multifamily housing development being happening here in Vermont. And there are a very small group of people who are well suited to know the ins and outs, because tax credits are a beast of their own.
Alyssa, you have presented us with a number of different strategies. I'm wondering if you have a recommendation of one that we might consider, and whether that comes before or after that type of document that Bellows Falls put out.
Great question. I think my recommendation would be a little of both. I think one recommendation, I will say I originally had dates, and then I took them off to try and generalize a little, but I think the background involves is some of what we've already started now, just, you know, it feels like we have some common goals and we can maybe work together, find a point on them, but that's something, I don't know, we could do at our next meeting again. I do think Joe from the Housing Task Force is planning to come anyway, right, with some housing.
He will be here next weekend.
Yeah, housing data update, so just thinking Joe has some pretty regular data around. And hearing Tom's point of recognizing, we might, you know, we're after the fine, like, it must be this square footage, but if anything else, it might be a useful supplement and background for us, you know, like, I think a three-bedroom home affordability has become a real gap in Wattemurray, and we're calling offhand just around, like, that purchase price has gone from, you know, making up numbers 300 to 550, you know, which jumped much more rapidly than others, so that might just be informative for us. So to me, the kind of this background in goals is something we potentially do at our next meeting on, it's October 7th, right? To kind of revisit the conversation we're having here. I think what we had outlined in the part from the input is kind of like some of what is important is all these considerations, like the approximate costs and things we're considering, and to maybe plan for the 23rd, which is our second meeting in October, Tom doing a more formal presentation of that, and to me, that would be one that we would want to just think about how to structure that, one, so that people could kind of come and be on the same page as us, and then also provide input. I don't know if we think it's worth getting Keneet input before then, I think we could, but I think we also want to be realistic about like what we're willing to do, you know, is it weighing on this proposal? But I would say at a minimum for, you know, assuming we're doing some combination of kind of the latter two chunks on October 23rd, that it would be good to do like an additional no-armed front porch for, and contact Lisa, and let neighbors know, "Hey, we're talking about development in your neighborhood, you're welcome to join." And we did get a lot of questions, I would say at least on the Housing Task Force, about kind of this like, "Who's going to purchase them, how are we going to assure what in the deed?" So if there's stuff about that we have to talk about, I would anticipate those kind of questions we'll get on the 23rd. And input method, sorry, that would be an in percent slash online meeting. Written comments and survey, and we can just figure out how we want to do that, but I don't think that needs to be separate, it's just saying, you know, "If you have feedback, please provide it here." Focus group side goes, I didn't write, like, other groups are obviously talking to the Housing Task Force, if we want to ask the Planning Commission, or the Conservation Commission, or others. For input, we could certainly do that too.
Well, there's something of the potential of meeting with the DRB on the 16th, and then the Housing Task Force on the 17th, in anticipation of that meeting on the 23rd, would generate more information to do it on the 23rd.
And to be clear, we will at some point need to receive a permit from the DRB for this, but not for the housing, for the municipal building, the restored building, right?
Would, just in terms of the timing, uh, do you need to have the new building built before you can take down the waterbury?
Yeah.
So, that's gonna put everything back, maybe, or at least in that particular area.
I think building, new building is the easiest part of the project.
Well, then there's the taking the asbestos roof and all that stuff.
Yeah, I think the rest of the building we can do. That's a specialty contract for the rest of the building, is a, is a straightforward down job. You know, concrete block buildings, some bricks and rebar. I'm not sure it's gonna take forever to pull that down, and then the triads can go to the ice center. Are we gonna crush at some point? Some of the folks I've talked to, and I know of all times, said there might not be as much rebar as you think. So, you know, maybe then once the roof is off, then that's done, you know.
Just take those slushy embers and.
Yeah, that's all right. Chris could probably take that down for us pretty quick.
Trucking, trucking.
I mean, if we're not gonna down, you know.
Big community of that. All right. Uh, anything else on the outreach plan for the, yeah? Captured the move of the, uh,
Alyssa will lead together in the plan on the twenty-third. Alyssa could share with me that Bellows Falls document, too?
Totally.
Right. Housing update. I did meet with Joe Camerata, but we can have a go. And, uh, he suggested, uh, that he'd be, uh, willing to work with the Housing Task Force to come up with a proposal, uh, for the, um, I'm trying to shift my gears here.
For the trust fund.
I'm sorry?
For the trust fund.
Yes, there we go, the housing trust fund. And, uh, we talked about the programs that are working, and gotten some input from, uh, Montpelier and, uh, Woodstock, uh, on the V Hip program, and some of the other initiatives that they've taken, some of which have worked well, some of which have not, as Kane was mentioning at the last meeting. And he would also come up with a suggested price tag to get started with this, so that we could take a look at how much of the, uh, lot funding, um, we'd want to invest in this year. So, we'll be getting that. Uh, they've also, uh, put in a, uh, application to the Butt Community Foundation for an education series that they expect to get, because the, uh, meaning of the interest came to them and suggested that they apply for it, uh, on, uh, housing issues. And Joe will also be providing an overview of what that education series would look like, uh, conceptually, uh, next week. So, that's, that's my update on that.
Will he, he's gonna have a suggestion for a price tag next week? Or is that the next?
Not, he will have a suggestion next week. We don't have to necessarily vote on it next week. But he will have a proposal, uh, to, to put before us, uh, based on some of the data that he's gathered and, uh, the expertise that he's been able to accumulate over the past year.
Right up.
That's great.
All right. Now we get to, uh, the VLCT, uh, delegate nominations. I'll open up, uh, nominations for, uh, Waterbury Delegate to the, uh, VLCT, uh, Town Fair Meeting.
Uh, I would like to nominate Alyssa Johnson.
I have to work on Tuesday and talk to her.
Tom lights.
Do I need to say I have to work on Tuesday?
I have to work for the town, that pays me more than twelve hundred dollars a year on Tuesday. So, I am going for some on Wednesday. I don't know if we all got it. It was just one of those, I got the email that was like, "You're registered to attend, your town hasn't told us who the voting delegate is."
I just assumed it was gonna be Tom.
It has been Bill in the past, in previous years. I will say, I went in person, I did last year, and it is, um, a very charming town meeting-like affair. I think we're doing it all virtually this year, but there was an excellent moderator from Centown. They read through the entire policy platform, and you're being this little nerd, I love the VLCT policy platform, it's phenomenal. And then they like, they call up the town, just really endorse it, so. Anything to add, Bill? How's it doing? You did it for many years, thirty-five, I'm gonna ask.
I don't like that. Are you going? Unfortunately, not. I, I thought about it today, but it said that, uh, registration was closed, and now I have an appointment, so that's it.
All right, uh.
Are you due, but that was my point. So, I would say, I'm going to the part in Killington on Wednesday, I'm moderating.
Yeah, I'll be in there Wednesday, but I can't go tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow's just online, so I'll do it best, best time.
All right, we have a motion to appoint, uh, Tom Lights as our delegate to the meeting, uh, tomorrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moves and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all of them say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, Tom, you are official delegate.
I'll just, uh, I can add a couple of quick things. So, I was on VLCT as internal committees for development policy. So, I was on their finance committee, talked about a couple of interesting things. The, the first was, I think, a growing acknowledgement by a lot of people that current use is not at least in a meaningful way, and there's a lot of, a lot of tax dollars out there. Which is something that came up repeatedly as part of the policy. Another part was, um, something that I, I've raised for years, and I feel like I find that traction, which is, it's a small number of people, but it happens in every town, it's generally the same properties every year. There are some people that get a property tax refund, so their pre-bait from the state exceeds both their education and municipal taxes. So, we are using education fund dollars to pay their municipal taxes, and then some. And I have suggested that, my understanding of the educational law, and I may be wrong, is you can get to zero, but that's your bound. I mean, how can you logically go below zero? Why should the ed fund pay for not ed fund expenses? And in Waterbury, it's not a lot of money, but we're spending, you know, we're not spending, it's not our state money, but we're giving ten, fifteen grand a year to people. And it's, it's, um, I've viewed it as a problem for a long time, and, um, a couple of times I've, I've made inquiries about this, and the answer I got back from the tax clerk was sort of like, you know, casual, well, it happens sometimes, which I think is totally unsatisfactory.
That's a problem, that doesn't make it right.
Tom and Teresa are well aware of the issue, too, and they're hoping to, to work on it, but, you know. And just doing a survey, they have tons of other towns, and it happens everywhere. It's not all the money in the world, but, you know, it's a million bucks statewide. And I just don't understand, and I, I ask the question, if you get a state income tax return, you can apply that to your property taxes, and, you know, perhaps that's it? And, and it's, it's some, and somehow it comes through this way, and that's not the answer. But it's just, maybe it's a statistical odyssey, and in a large system, there's bound to be mistakes, but this one strikes me as fixable, because it's a, you know, I look back in the last decade, and it's, you know, a dozen properties a year, and one changes every year, and that one comes on the next year. It's basically the same ten people every year, year in, year out. And Bill, Bill probably knows those people off the top of his head.
So, that's how many properties we have in current use, about ten properties?
No, not currently, I suppose.
Oh, okay.
That get, that get there.
The, the refund.
And I'm sure in Stowe it happens, we've seen that, and something is not correct there, I think.
How many properties, you mentioned current use, how many properties do you think we have in our town?
I don't know the properties in current use, but it's, it's, you know, you know the program history as well as I do, but, um, I think town managers in every town can name properties that are in current use, you know, based on agricultural history, but there's no more agriculture.
Right.
We've got about a hundred fifty thousand dollars?
And, and, yeah, so the state, when properties are in current use, their value is lower for tax purposes. And the state, I don't know if they quite make us whole, but the intent is they, they make up the difference. So, not only do the property owners get a difference, but the state loses revenue and then pays towns to make up some of their lost revenue, so it's an effective little win. And, and I, I've talked to some, some town managers in towns where they say, you know, sometimes take homeowners by properties, and they, of course, have no intention of logging, for example. They want, they want it because it's wooded, and they want to be up in the mountains, but they're in current use. So, your, your ski shuttleway is pretty cheaper.
All the house crews have a management plan.
Right, and they don't carry it out. They don't carry it out.
No, but even if you have a plan, you can have a plan that says you don't have to do anything for fifteen years. So, even if you have a plan.
Well, that may be appropriate if it's managed for.
Right, it's managed for, right, for Kefi timber and stuff.
That's not appropriate, unless then it's never gonna be in forestry, so, anyway.
But I thought that was an interesting conversation. I've also talked about this a little bit with Michael Anqueter, who's on the education redesign. I don't know what it's formerly named, but the Education Redesign Task Force, if you will. And I've just said, hey, I think this area needs looking into, and it strikes me as inherently fair, and it strikes me as an expensive program, and I haven't seen a lot of.
Can I say something, Dan? I don't think, I don't think, I've witnessed this for some time. I don't think the return on investment, they call it the working landscape. I don't think the return on investment from a logging, anybody with, any landowner with a piece of property might get to harvest that project in their lifetime. What they're compensated for through current use, I don't think that our society gets that investment back in, in that period of time, because it's just, timber is a very volatile market, number one. Number two, there's not a lot of money in it. So, I think, you know, it's, it's brave to keep the landscape open, the landscape open. That's one of the top number-one benefits, you know, to any of this, but from a economic standpoint, it's a losing game.
Okay, well, uh, maybe we can add that, uh, to, uh, get a VLCT, uh, update, next, uh, Monday, if that's not too early. And the other, uh, big item that we have on for next week is, uh, the report from the Housing Task Force. And the proposal, the update. Anything else that people would like to talk about? See that Karen or somebody has highlighted the two thousand twenty-three buyouts.
Yes, that's now ready. I can get the orders here, they may not be able to make next week, but.
All right, well, we'll see if they can, since it's kind of, it looks like a fairly, uh, late agenda.
And then something, um, for your radar, not for next week, and I'm hoping the twenty-third. Well, there'll need to be a joint town E-Fund meeting to discuss health insurance. And I don't have MVP, but I got the BCDS rate sheet today, and it is beyond, uh, as expected.
Do you have copies of the audit?
Yeah, yeah, there are, that's gonna change that. So, I'll talk to the E-Fund Board about that, too, but.
So, I'm being that in the parking lot. This handbook item, should we just turn it to coordination? I don't think those plans, I'm just wondering.
No, they, they're not, the committee's not gonna meet until late next month.
Right, and, and Crew just said they, sorry, I was saying, just re-read that. Like, tonight's conversation, sorry, sorry. The committee handbook, should I just say follow-up, or whatever?
Yeah, flood, flood follow-up.
Where was I?
Flood.
And then we said follow-up on goals for what you add after the housing presentation, if that makes sense.
Anything else anyone wants to see on the agenda next week?
I guess we could hop on event permits, because that's been a party hot for.
Maybe we have, how is my delightful permitting system coming?
Coming along pretty well, but we don't have an update.
We could also ditto with rental registry outreach, which was just about, like, how are we telling people they need to comply?
Where are we with, um, the animal control officer?
That's me.
I know.
We got him in a nice town, how much did that?
Yeah, we just, uh, bought him a nice little, yeah, stay up in the wild.
So, so you're, you're staying as that for?
For now, it, um, I guess what I've, what I've learned, is that when you have an animal control officer, you, you, that person generates additional work for me and for this board sometimes. So, it's, it's a double-edged sword. At some point, I think, change.
It's like these help officers.
So, I've learned a couple of things that are interesting. In talking to, to Jim Barlow, the attorney, what he said is, it's a perfectly valid legal response, even if you have an ordinance, to say simply, "You don't have the resources." So, he said, "The ordinance doesn't create an obligation on the town, on the part of the town to, you know, necessarily adjudicate these things." But, um, you know, last week I had a series of complaints from Neill and Flats about some dogs. And so, I sent, um, I knocked on doors, and I sent three people letters saying, "You have, and you have a need to register your dog, or I'm gonna fine you fifty bucks." And that's the first offense, and the second day is your second offense, and that's seventy-five, and the third day is your a hundred bucks. And beyond that, I'm happy, it takes me thirty seconds to write a ticket. And all those dogs are registered. So, it generally, just the threat of needing to issue the fines has been quite effective. And, and the reality is, um, you know, probably ninety percent of the calls are from Neill and Flats. And that the owner is an easy person to work with, and well aware that he's very helpful, too.
Good, but.
So, it's been, it's been okay, um, and then. Probably, you know, I haven't had a late night call where it's been a dog in Waterbury. Couple right over the door, but not in Waterbury, uh, which has been helpful, and then, um, the, um, and then you got a lot of all calls that are not about dogs, who really, we call it animal control officer, like the ordinance specifically addresses dogs. But I'm hoping High Park, High Park Select Board is gonna take up, uh, the kennel space at their next meeting. It didn't get resolved, but because their administrator resigned.
Really?
Probably because he's the dog control officer. The, uh, one of the administrators of Forward addressed us, uh, maybe a month ago, indicating that there is no longer, uh, a person in charge of the, uh, dog park, the leash room, the dog park. Yeah, it is being used on a regular basis.
It is being used and is being maintained. And so, um, there's still some volunteers that are out there, that come out there and do maintenance. So, we, it's in our, it's in our routine, and, and if that's not the case, then we'll start to maintain it, because it's a town property, and, simply, simply put it in our rotation. But the, the, the good news is, um, you know, it's a dog park, so inside you don't need to mow it very often. The dogs do their own job of keeping that low. You know, so it's, it's generally running okay. Did get damage in the, in the windstorm. Last winter, there was some fence work done, but, um, it's, it's running along okay, it's chugging along. It doesn't take a lot of money, I think, to maintain it, and there, there is a small balance with Forward. I think it's fifty hundred dollars or nothing, so if you need the.
It's three, I guess.
If we need to do something, we can draw on to that.
Billy, um, how's the town plan? Do you already come in, is it useful, we've got an update?
So, we're, um, so when the.
So we're in the process of writing the grant, community development grant, I think it's called.
Oh, in this whole planning, right?
Yeah, so we're in the process of that and that should be ready pretty soon. We're working on our outreach plan.
An outreach plan? How exciting.
We've got a handout point. Our outreach plan.
You're about about to, wait, thank you for offering.
No, I want to.
We're about to prepare a survey and work on that. And then we're just still working throughout things. The process is moving along.
Okay, but it doesn't feel, I'm just what I was thinking about, like a juncture to provide an update and it doesn't necessarily feel like one.
I think they promised you, I want to say late December or early January, we'll be, they proposed our timeline.
Great.
So I think it's probably not on calendar, but it's probably in the ethos calendar. But I know that we were supposed to give you guys an update at some point.
We could do police anything out of the way or wait on that.
Yeah, I don't know if we've got any more input necessarily on police right now. There was that noise issue. We asked if we could put up some, please don't use your air brakes signs. And that was politely disallowed by the Americans, right?
On Main Street, but not up there.
And we'll talk about noise next week?
Sure, sure. I mean, I was driving through Bethel to visit my mother and cut through Randolph and realized that there's a sign in Randolph that says, "Don't use your engine brakes." And it's right in the middle of town. Which is a few of the complaints that I was hearing. I know that Roger, you had heard complaints from north of 100.
Yeah, people coming down the.
Yeah, yeah. And then there were complaints that I was getting about Main Street. About engine brakes and the noise, but I think that was folks eating on restaurant patios, which I think will come to an end relatively soon.
Still might be worth an effort. Let's put it on. Take some heat on noise.
I don't think I've ever heard an air brake on Main Street. Kind of eat them more often.
There is one individual that seems to like to squeal his tires.
I've heard those things.
If I get in the middle of the.
Just in our first meeting, we're having a.
Okay, but anyway, we'll bring that up next week. That'll be good. I believe that it will be an executive session tonight. Short one?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So if we're all done with items for next meeting, I will undertake a motion to enter executive session.
We'll land these subjects. Good night.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you all.
Good night, all.